We're outta here.
What in the world?
So you're trying to hide behind them.
I figured one of them was gonna run for trustee or something.
Probably.
And then when they left in five minutes, I'm like, well, I guess they're not.
Okay.
What do we have all? This is the all the same thing?
That's an agenda.
Yeah.
Jeff said he felt that we should officially have an agenda. Keep somebody's email.
I'd like to go back to chapter nine first.
I'll keep it copied up.
I didn't bring my materials with me for chapter nine.
What's that?
I didn't bring any of my materials with me for chapter nine.
You don't have none in the Google Docs?
Yeah, but my notes are not with me.
Oh, fuck. Um, I'll turn the phone down.
Well, I guess we can finish that one then. I think the nepotism was the only one on there, but.
I thought that, um, John responded to it in an email.
Yeah, he did.
He's like, take the whole paragraph now and don't worry about it.
Is that the one you said taken out?
No, not on nepotism.
No, that was on the dogs.
Oh, dogs, that's right, I'm sorry.
Well, the nepotism, he basically said the same thing.
Not quite.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't taken out.
I have not seen this language regarding nepotism in any code of ethics adopted by smaller municipalities. Perhaps check with New York State Department of NICOM to see what they think, given your small side.
Right, and that's what I will do.
We're gonna be a small, actual government.
Should we work together on this? Are we gonna work together?
Yeah.
Good, good. Well, I don't know why we don't have all of our stuff so we can clean these up. It would be nice to clean these up. Where should we start? What materials do you have, Maurice?
Well, I went over forty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-four, and seventy-one, which is what the agenda is supposed to do.
Uh, I know, but we but last night you set the agenda. I didn't set that agenda. I said we were gonna take care of this stuff and work our way through this, but that just fell on deaf ears. So I really think we should get on the same page. Are we doing dogs tonight, or are we not gonna we're gonna leave that one too?
We did dogs.
What's that?
We did dogs.
No, there's a lot on dogs we did not finish.
We were waiting for John, I think.
John's response.
Yeah, and we have John's response for that today. So we could do that, but I get, do you have materials for that, or no?
No.
What's that?
I just, I no, I just brought the materials for the five agendas.
Okay. All right. I'd really like to get them done if we could move along, and then we got the answers, we could've moved and cleaned everything up, but we'll wait, we'll wait two weeks from now or whatever. All right, um, so we're going to checks.
Forty-seven.
Are we going to checks? Is you tell me because I'm prepared with all of them, so.
I I apologize, but I thought we went over last night before the end of the meeting, that these were the chapters we were gonna do tonight.
Yeah, and that was what I wrote down.
I wrote down.
That's yours down, and there was no discussion about we'll follow up on any of these?
No, because we didn't know when John was gonna come back.
We were gonna wait for John.
Yeah, we didn't know when he was gonna come back, so.
What notes do we have on these? There wouldn't be comments on here that early, you wouldn't know. Oh, I'll just go on, that's that's fine, my my bad. I gotta be more assertive as mayor, I really am really bad at it. Okay, so, uh, so I I guess, you know, I would I would suggest we do something, but I I probably, I don't know, should we start at the beginning of checks we turned and work our way down till the first comment?
It's a very short chapter.
Can you, uh?
You want it bigger?
Yeah. Make it bigger. Bigger at half, I can see.
I think there's only one comment.
There's the comment in in forty-seven dash three?
Yeah. I had gone through it and didn't have any comments.
So, okay, so forty-seven dash three, is that on?
Um, before we before we do that, Fran, do you want, do you, can you, should you save all this that's on here now, or do we, when do you save this? Cause I don't wanna.
Once we've, what I did last night is once we approved everything and cleaned it, then I moved it over, I copied it over to the other folder.
But did you, but but does that show what we changed?
It will.
It's not always.
I think the what, the way we did it, I mean, I wasn't watching that last night, the way it is, is like, we now have a clean document and we can compare it. Maurice said she can compare it to the original document in Word, right, Maurice? And and get a compare document back and forth.
But if we make comments on this and it's not from the red line, then is that gonna be saved anywhere?
It'll be, this has versions.
Okay.
So we should be okay with this?
I just wanna ma- make sure that we have that. Cause I played with it today and it saved, and it saved the red lines and saved comments, but it saved what we did. So the first one is just the, uh, found in the master fee schedule, so I think we accept that.
Yeah, mhm. So authorized by this chapter and found in the masters.
Accept, next is, uh, insert fee.
Fee, so that reads.
Resolve.
Um, where did, wait, wait, where did we insert fee?
What's that?
Where do we insert the word fee? Can we undo that?
It was on the, it was on the collect, I can give.
It was in, it was in a comment, but I don't, yeah.
It was, should've been under forty-seven dash four.
Any service.
And it should say, any fee or service charge.
Okay, yeah, sometimes the comments are comments, but are not redlined in the document, so we have to make sure we don't accept them until they're in there.
Okay.
Any fee.
My bad.
Or.
Or a service charge.
I did that yesterday, and I'm like, damn, like, okay. Uh, now I can accept it. Okay, now it's it. Any fee or service charge. And that's it?
Yeah.
On this one? So I'm gonna s- save this one. How did I do that? Okay, fine. Oh, I I changed the folder, the file that we were using that was named Fran last night, I renamed it so it was more appropriate and not necessarily my f- um, okay, now I gotta figure out where it is called. Um, what the hell is it called? Cleaned and okayed. It's a folder called Cleaned and Okayed. So that's where, that's where the things are that we have, that we think we're finished with.
What ones are in there now, Fran?
What the ones that are in there now are, I'm gonna tell you. Five, thirty-two, twenty-one, and the one we just did, which was checks forty-seven.
Right, okay.
Okay, that should be what's in there now. Five, twenty-one, thirty-two, okay, I just put a forty-seven in there, let me just wait until it actually gets in there.
Now is the document in Google, is it still post-phase five, or is it onto?
No, it's post-phase five.
Still, okay.
Yeah.
I was having our time. I was searching it and I couldn't find it under that, so I thought maybe we changed it.
Sometimes you check, sometimes you print it out. Small case, lowercase, it comes out one time, but most of the time now I can find it.
Okay, there it is, okay.
Did you say nine is in there, Fran?
Uh, no, I took nine out.
Okay, cause I I made a bunch of changes.
Yeah, I accidentally put nine in there last night and I took it out cause then we weren't finished with it.
Code enforcement officer.
Today is the fifth, huh? So we did chapter twenty-seven, forty-seven. Okay. So we did one forty-eight.
Mhm.
Um.
Tell me, we're not ready for it?
I'm on, okay, I'm in.
Okay, the first one's just changing billing code inspector, or code enforcement officer.
Billing inspector, code enforcement officer, so that should be good.
So you're gonna handle the deleting and whatever, accepting, Fran?
Oh, I'll accept it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, now we get into the sticky stuff that doesn't make any sense to me.
So I wanna, I did did some research today, and I know I went to Google, which is probably not a good thing, but, um, the, uh, so I went on roll-off, roll-off dumpsters and, which also can be included in that, are front-end, uh, front-load dumpsters. Um, but, uh, if we wanted, but they are different, and, uh, I think we should definitely add, add front-load dumpsters to the, uh.
So we've got roll, roll-off dumpster is defined as what?
The roll-off dumpster is the type of container designed to use with a vehicle containing hydraulic or mechanical capabilities to lift and prefabricated container from the ground onto the truck for transport purposes.
They roll off the back.
They roll off the back.
They roll off the back.
Set them down, they drive.
Hydraulic and mechan- now, see, to me, when you're saying designed for use with with hydraulic or mechanical capabilities, a garbage truck with hooks on the back for the hydraulic can pick a dumpster and dump it into the back of a garbage truck, to me is the.
Same thing.
It.
What is that?
You know, when you, when you hook the dumpsters that they have down at Springbrook onto the back of the garbage truck, hydraulically pick it up and dump it in.
Yeah, you got the little hook and they lift it up.
But they're not taking, they're dumping that.
Right, so it's what this says.
They're taking away, they're not leaving in the dumpster.
It says designed for use with a vehicle containing hydraulic or mechanical capabilities to lift a prefabricated container from the ground onto the truck.
For transport purposes.
Okay, for transport purposes, okay. Okay, so it's not for emptying purposes. So there's a difference between one that gets, to me, rolled onto the back of the truck or whatever.
And I don't know why.
If it's lifted, well, there's a flatbed.
Right, and it gets rolled or lifted on it.
Rolls onto the flatbed.
So one's for transport purposes and the other is for emptying.
So we need another definition.
Uh.
Which I had on here, it's a, it's a front-load dumpster.
I don't see it.
It's not, it's in the rules.
It's not on here, I don't know what happened to it.
It's down in rules and regulations.
It should be in definitions, yeah.
So we wanna add it as a.
But I don't have the, uh, I had, I had it up here, I'm not sure what happened to it.
Yeah.
You you have it in in forty-eight three?
Yeah, I have it in B, but I don't have it. It's lifted by, it's, um, I I'll have to, I'll have to find the definition.
And you, did you send it today? I thought I s- I s- I don't know, I saw a bunch of stuff today.
I I thought I put it on there, but I don't see it.
I don't see a definition.
Hi, staff.
I'm a rolloff dumpster, and I don't see a definition.
No, it's not there, I don't know how to do it.
Hi, staff.
No, no, I'm looking in Go- I'm looking in Google.
Roll-off containers with.
She leave.
Yeah, she saw the camera on.
She said hi, bye.
It was like, good.
All right, so we need a definition of.
Segregating, yeah.
Front-load.
Front-load dumpster.
Here's a definition for dumpster, which I I would recommend instead of front-load dumpster. It's a large trash receptacle designed to be hoisted and emptied into a truck.
That sounds fun, because.
And that's what?
The dumpster.
It's a definition of dumpster.
And then what are we gonna call the dumpsters that are the ones that you lift on with your truck and dump into the truck?
That's this, a large trash receptacle designed to be hoisted and emptied into a truck.
And doesn't matter how, back, front?
A front-loading dumpster has slots on either side, which are designated to fit the prongs of a garbage truck. The truck inserts these prongs and lifts the dumpsters over the top of the truck.
Okay, front-loading basically means that you throw the stuff.
I don't know what a front-load.
You throw the stuff in the front, I guess.
In the front of what?
Is there a, is there a?
Front of the truck.
A door or something like a, you push it like a.
Typically, no.
They just open it.
Typically, it's a a four rigid sides that don't open.
And they dump it into a truck.
The lid opens and then they, and when it flips it upside down, it just dumps it in the.
The roll-off dumpsters, those, the front can open.
Okay.
On the right view, so which is what, which is why I would recommend that we we not call the dumpster a front-load dumpster because it doesn't open, while the roll-on dumpster does open.
But front-end dumpster, front-load dumpsters, if you go and see what front-load dumpsters are anywhere, that's what they are.
It's a specific thing.
They're the ones that you, they they lift on the top and they load them onto the front.
The truck lifts it from the front.
Sorry, they they ro- they load them into the front of what?
They load them into the truck.
Well, they pick them up like they're, during the driver, and it goes right over the cab.
Yeah, it goes right over the cab, right, it goes all the way over the cab. Where does front come into that?
I don't know, that's how they define it. If you go on here, it shows the images, I didn't bring it out of shit in nowhere.
It's lifted from the front.
Put whatever you want there, I really don't care, whatever, Jesus. I went there, I did some work today, a little research, and front-end dumpsters, if you go there, it shows what they are. There's seven hundred pictures of them, and they're all the kind that they have in all the condos or the kinds they have all over the place. They're the place that, they're not the ones that are roll-off dumpsters.
They're more common now than.
So if you wanna put something else that that you're satisfied with, that's fine. No one else might know, but I I don't care, I really don't care, I I just.
We should define all of them.
I don't care.
Roll-off, front, front-load or the other one, what is the other one?
Roll-off containers, they're roll-off containers, which is what.
We should just get rid of container.
Yeah.
If that's okay.
Well, I mean, originally, what my comment originally was that, cause they, roll-off container and dumpster were defined together as one thing.
Right.
Uh, and I thought they were two different things. I don't mind take, leaving.
They are. It it, they are meant to be.
Roll-off container or dumpster, in the original document said the type of container, it was two, two different things, but with one definition. Uh, to me, that didn't make any sense. A roll-off container was different from a dumpster. So we need a definition of a roll-off container, which we certainly have.
Both are considered the same thing, or roll-off dumpster is a dumpster that's on a flatbed that they lower down by hydraulics and by.
It's like a winch.
Yep, a winch.
It's got rollers on the bottom of it.
And then they load it back on. The other is, is the other containers, which have wheels and they're put in place permanently or semi-permanently, and vehicles come there and they load them on. Or in our case, our guys tip the ones down at at Springbrook down into the back of the garbage truck. And those are, whatever you wanna call them.
Dumpsters.
They're called dumpsters still.
Yeah, they're all dumpsters, general term.
But for for this purpose, we need two different ones, because one says it's enclosed down in, uh, forty-eight three B. And dumpsters that we put on the road are not enclosed in there, not permanent enclosed.
Right, that was, that was what threw me off.
What's that?
That's what, that's what threw me off, because it's enclosed with bricks around.
That's right, yeah.
That's, that's the.
That's how you have to set them up.
That's the local law, that if you have a, if you have a dumpster, that it be enclosed, that it be enclosed.
Like behind Grand Union or.
Exactly, that's, that's a dumpster.
A dumpster is in Springbrook.
That's a front-load dumpster.
I'm not talking about Springbrook, that that's a dumpster. The things that we see here on Main Street, that's a roll-off container.
That's a roll-off dumpster. If you go call somebody up and say, can I have a container, they won't know what I'm talking about. I know this because I'm in the field of construction and I have to order dumpsters, and you call either Royal or you call Stevie Padella or Jerry Allen and you ask, do you have a dumpster, do you have a three-yard dumpster? You don't say container.
Dumpster's clear.
Okay, so back to the definitions.
Back to the definition, so the proposal is that there be something called a roll-off dumpster.
Dumpster, okay.
And there be something else called a dumpster.
No, I want it to be, I want it to be ro- front-load dumpster. That's what I think it should be. I hate to differ with you, but that's what I think it is.
We disagree on the second one.
Does anyone have a problem with a roll-off dumpster, with a front-end dumpster?
I don't know.
We don't have both, cause they are both in the world, so it would be more thorough.
Can we say?
The front-load or? The problem that I have with calling it a front-end dumpster is there's no front end to it.
Well, you should talk to the people that call them that.
That's the business, that's the name.
It's the business term for them.
Yeah.
And some of them are sloped front-end, and they're still flat on the top.
Okay, so we've got a roll-off dumpster, and then we just wanna say dumpster other.
No, Dave does it like that, he wants it to be called a front-load dumpster.
We'll put it in and we'll leave it as a not, not, not accept it until we can all figure, cause I need to go look back and see what the heck. Dave, you have a definition, or we need a definition?
I do have a front, a definition of a dumpster.
A front-load?
I have a definition of a dumpster. I could not find a definition for front-load dumpster.
Okay, I'm gonna go crazy, cause I just had it on here.
A dumpster is defined as a large trash receptacle designed to be hoisted and emptied into a truck.
Front-load dumpster, this was hard to find, has slots on either side, which are designated to fit the prongs of a garbage truck. The truck inserts these prongs and lifts the dumpster over the top of the truck, or fills the dumpster, over and over, emptying the waste into the truck hopper or storage compartment. We can condense that, could be a front-end loader, is a, a dumpster that's designed.
A large trash receptacle designed to be hoisted and and emptied into a truck.
Mhm.
Can you disconnect or something so I can copy it, please?
Yeah, Dave, you can leave, leave it, go on, leave it.
Okay.
Generic trademark of dumpster.
Mhm. Okay, I'm wasting away too much time on that.
Okay, um.
Well, that and the checks return, I mean. Do we do that, or are we?
Twenty minutes.
Well, it's important that we get it right, so, you know, we spent a few minutes on it.
Well, I think that if you have front-load or any other thing that's dumpster, that most likely you would figure it out, so.
Uh.
There's a lot of resistance.
Yes, okay. So in the, in the current definition that's on the page for roll-off dumpster, we're taking out the bottom, the last part that says, oh, to lift and dump the material into the body of said truck, okay.
Correct.
Do we wanna put that as part of the definition?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We had the definition of a front.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
You want it again?
No, it's okay, he's gonna copy it. I'm just leaving it for the, I think, for the time being. Okay. The roll-off dumpster shall be placed.
So I think A should be roll-off dumpster.
Replace container, yeah, so replace the third.
B, we can't do anything with, we don't have the name of it.
Um. All right, so that's good. C, the roll-off dumpster should not obstruct any part of the sidewalk. Okay, D, roll-off and front-load.
What's that?
D, roll-off and front-load dumpsters must be equipped with covers.
I would put front-load dumpsters, and I'll get you a definition for front-load dumpsters.
I'm sorry, where are they at?
Why don't we just say any, or a D?
Where are you?
What? D forty-eight.
I'm B, we can't, we have to change that.
B, we said we were gonna hold.
No, so why did we say we're gonna hold?
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
A front-load dumpster.
Right, shall have permanent enclosure.
Shall have a per- have permanent enclosure installed around the container. A brick block or suitable fencing to it, yes, that that's good.
Okay, that one stays.
And then D should be front-roll-off, front and load, front-load.
I'm sorry, which one are you on?
D.
D is in dog?
Yes. Roll-off and. Why don't we say any dumpsters, all dumpsters?
What's that?
Yeah, for D, can we just say all dumpsters rather than? Or is it, is it fine?
I don't know what other kinds there are.
I don't either.
Well, there's no cover for a roll-off dumpster.
Yeah, there are. You may not see them, but they do have them.
They have them on the road, but when you're using them on a job, that they don't cover them, so. I guess if you had it on the street, maybe.
I would leave it like that, Fran.
Yeah.
Okay, um, to Marianne, wait.
E is.
E.
Okay, D has to change?
Yeah, D, and I can't find where the edit is for that, I'm trying to find the edit.
I don't think we did that. It should say roll-off and front-load dumpsters must be equipped with covers. And all dumpsters must be covered at all times except during filling or emptying.
So you're getting rid of roll-off.
Okay, and all dumpster, yeah.
Right, dumpsters capitalized.
So take off.
And roll-off, right.
And B, that is highlighted, and I can't find where that, why that's highlighted or what.
What's that? E?
B, front-load dumpsters is highlighted, and I can't find the cor- uh, way to, way to correct it. It'll pop up, I'm sure. Or maybe it has to do with, okay, it has to do with Maurice's comment, I believe Springbrook has dumpsters. All right, so we're leaving. Uh, B, B, where it's highlighted in yellow, at least it is on my screen, is connected to Maurice's comment, I believe Springbrook has dumpsters enclosed, but I believe the thinking was that just roll-off, okay.
So resolve that one.
Resolve it, okay. Uh, okay. Next part, G, replace the building inspector, should receive it and used.
I'm sorry, you went to where?
G.
I I'm on E.
E, we, we, I thought we said that was okay, roll-off dumpsters placed on the street should be equipped with.
We don't, we don't do that, not, that is not done now. I think it should be done.
What, D?
The flat, on E, the flashers.
Flashers.
I mean, if we think it should be done, then we should leave it in.
Yes, yeah.
Roll-off dumpsters placed, was that something that the code update committee just added, or?
That's currently in the code.
It's in the code, but we just don't do it. So that's okay. G, the owner, Lisa, is responsible for filling the dumpster permit, whether it will filing, yeah, blah, paying the fee, uh, okay.
Why, why do we want the code enforcement officer who is not the most, for whom we have had difficulty getting responses? Why do we want the code enforcement officer responsible for giving approval?
For giving what?
Approval. Approval, and G, and G, the first sentence?
Because I think that's his job.
I mean, that's not something.
You think it could be the village clerk?
That's not something he's been doing now, the village clerk has been doing it.
Well, village clerk shouldn't be doing it. I think, you know, what authority does a village clerk have to give a permit to, to, he's not looking at the site, you know? That just means that Jeff would have to go to the site and look at the site. I mean, he can issue, he can give them, give them the application, but if it's a guy, if he wants to give him a permit, do we want Jeff going to a site to see if it's, you know, and approve the site? I mean, what, you know, qualifications would he have for that?
If somebody wants to put a dumpster on Main Street, it's pretty straightforward. If somebody wants to put a dumpster on B Street, it's a whole big issue.
B Street, you would never permit a dumpster on B Street.
But yeah, and there was a dumpster, it's a situation that not too long ago.
There's dumpsters on B Street, they put it in the site and they, uh.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, so I guess at that point, on B Street, but it, the building inspector.
Where? Where?
I don't remember, it was a couple of months ago, but the building inspector made it, he was told that he had to put it in his driveway and not on the street, so that's.
But these are the street regular, sorry.
But that's.
Right, but I said, but, uh, why would Jeff, why would Jeff have the responsibility to do that and the qualification to do that? If somebody wants to put him, he's gonna have to go look, tell them where they're gonna put it, and go over everything with him?
I think, I think.
It's more, uh, to me, it's more, uh, the issue is more of, he's more available to do that.
I think, um, I think we can't, we can't write the code based on the fact that we have a code enforcement officer that isn't.
But the code right now does not say code enforcement officer. The code right now says village clerk.
I think it should be changed.
Okay, paying the fee from the code enforcement officer. Um.
Fran, do you agree on that, or?
You know.
I agree.
Steve?
I agree, the, the, the clerk has enough to do without dealing with that stuff.
As does the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, but that's part of the job, it's part of the job site, you know, they're, they're there to to inspect and, you know, that would just be a portion of the, of the duties.
So, the issue is, if the code enforcement officer cannot get there within forty-eight hours, that holds up the construction. So maybe what needs to be done is that the amount of advanced time needs to be changed from forty-eight hours to.
Well, the code enforcement officer now has a person that's working with him, so.
Yeah, but we can't write this based on what the current situation. We gotta write this based on what we think, what we think it should be, you know, currently, we're all screwed up, but that's not what it necessarily has to be.
I, I think that more than forty-eight hours is a reasonable requirement for people to fill out a, a permit form.
Just to move forward to the next sentence, and I wrote this, and I know, Dave, you had commented on it. It says, in special cases and at the discretion of the village clerk, a permit may be approved in less than forty-eight hours. And the reason why I wrote that is because I had a discussion with Jeff about this whole section. Who does it, you know, when does it happen? He said, in many cases, somebody will run in here, the day before.
Last minute.[1690.65]
Yeah, and so that's why I put that in.
Yeah, but, but.
Well, on the street is different than on the driveway also.
Well.
But we don't, we don't, we're sorry, the code doesn't require a permit if you're putting the dumpster, I don't care what kind of dumpster, on private property.
Unless, of course, it cuts into the, into the sidewalk.
Right, the permit is only required when the dumpster intrudes upon public property, like a sidewalk, like a per, like a street.
We understand that.
I mean, what, what, when it goes on a street.
I think we understand that, it's still, if somebody comes in here and they're urgently wants want a dumpster in there, I don't know why we're letting the clerk do that. Is the clerk gonna stop what he's doing here and go take a look at the job site? Say it's Parsonage Street, and somebody wants one up there, Jeff's gonna close the office, and he's gonna go up to Parsonage Street and look at it, and he's gonna determine from what qualifications that that's a place that he should have it, and he's gonna be responsible for that.
Yes, and I think he does a very good job.
No, and he shouldn't be doing that. It's not his job.
Al- alternatively, well, somebody runs in and says, my, my tractor trailer with the dumpster is right up the hill, I need a dumpster permit, and Jeff is gonna say, go up see the code enforcement officer.
Right, yeah, that's what he should say. He should've said, no, you can't do that.
But I think some of them, some of them, I mean, I don't think Jeff's gonna say yes to something, or he's not gonna close the office, and he's not gonna run for something.
But we're saying if he gives a permit, he's gonna do that.
I'm saying in special cases, because, I mean, you know, not a good example, I know, because he's a pain in the butt, but Jimmy at the silver spoon, it's like, yeah, I have a dumpster coming in this afternoon, I need a permit, you know.
But he can't do that, he needs forty-eight hours, first of all, and then, and our code enforcers should be taking care of that.
Right, and then, oh. In re- in reality, the code says forty-eight, I mean, legally the code says forty-eight hours, in reality, that's not always the way it works.
Well, and that's, then what, you know, we're writing codes for people to abide by them.
I know, and it's, and it's the way it was and the way it should be abided by, but, you know, you're sitting in your office, and somebody comes running in, and I have a dumpster coming in, what are you gonna say?
I'd say, sorry, no, do you have a permit?
Yeah, the guy's got a dumpster coming in on a truck in two hours, didn't realize he needed a permit.
Then we shouldn't write laws.
No, but every, you know, I mean.
No, we can't, you can't do, have this special thing all the time for people, or they, that's, because then people just won't do it.
It's not all the time. It's not all, it's on rare occasions.
People will take abuse, uh, with, will definitely abuse that.
People are gonna abuse it, and, I mean, you know, that's just the nature of.
Well, let's give it forty-eight hours.
Well, I think you should have, I think that you should let, let Ann do it. Ann's less busy, and let Ann on three days, give a permit, because who cares? That's what we're saying, who cares? What does Jeff have to know about that Ann doesn't?
Jeff has, I mean, Jeff looks at every request for permit that comes in this office.
He's looking at it, but it's just saying they wanna put a, they wanna put a dumpster somewhere.
Yeah, but he also looks at.
Well, so Ann can look at that and agree with that.
He also looks at every building request that comes in this office, that's just sort of what he does before he passes it on.
I know, and then he moves on, he's not ma- supposed to be making any determinations. That wasn't his job, that's not what we hired him for.
I mean, it.
Okay, so we'll make it from the code enforcement officer and delete the village clerk. Sorry, village clerk stays in, and from the code enforcement officer goes in.
Okay, receiving approval from the code enforcement officer at least forty-eight hours before. And you wanna take out the in-special cases?
Right. Yes.
Well, if they're pulling a permit, then it shouldn't be like down to the last minute like that anyway.
Take out in-special cases.
I think in-special cases, then you you could have a permit, and could be approved.
Yeah. Like that, spur down the night before or something.
Okay, but you wanna, you wanna take the village clerk out?
I want to take the village clerk out, I think it should be the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, but I would take out spe- uh, uh, I would also take out the, uh, the sentence that start in-special cases, you're not saying what the special cases are, so I would take that out.
Uh, can we leave it in?
I would leave it in, I mean, if there's a special case, it means somebody comes in here and.
If there's a special case, they're, they're, they're come, they run down, the truck is on its way, they run down, I say, I say, I need a dumpster permit. Jeff says, here's the co- here's the form, go see the code enforcement officer.
Right.
And the code enforcement officer, and and that person's gonna run up to, or down, or wherever the code enforcement, and say, I need this now, and.
At, at his discretion.
And, that's right, exactly, at his discretion, he can, so you don't need the in-special, in-special cases.
Right.
Okay. Why not?
Because we're not, we're not identifying what the special cases are.
Okay, so then. So do we wanna take out?
But the other way just says forty-eight hours, period.
Okay, do we wanna just take out the word, okay, do we wanna just take out the word in-special cases and just say at the discretion of the code enforcement officer?
Sure, okay.
What, then just take out the in-special cases part of it?
Mm-hmm.
And just leave it like, at the discretion of that, a permit may be approved.
Okay, I think that's good.
And we're taking out notice or written over a verbal communication from the officer, that's all.
Caution, caution.
What's that?
Caution, extra thousand, that's all.
That's right, yeah, we should have put that in the fee schedule. We do that for, uh, expedi-
Expedia forty-four?
Expedating.
Expediate.
That comes out, the village.
Well, then, up in G you have, uh.
Open G to you.
Forty-eight hour. That's just not.
Up in D you have, uh.
Up and up and, uh, whatever.
Before a dumpster or roll-off container is placed.
I just, did I just?
That, uh, you're right, that needs to be rewrote, however, the question that I have is, should we permit a front-load dumpster on, thank you.
No. I agree, I don't think we should, do you?
I don't think we should.
No.
No, those are for just for garbage.
So at some point, and it's not in here, I don't think, um, there needs to be a J or a K or an L or whatever. Um, front-load dumpsters are not permitted on village streets or sidewalks.
Okay, so can.
So where you are right now, where you ha- have highlighted, Fran, um, receiving approval from the code enfor- at least forty-eight hours before a roll-off dumpster.
Dumpster.
Not, so remove dumpster or, and change roll-off to roll-off dumpster. Okay, now, the next, um, uh, phrase is, upon any village street or other facility. I'm not sure what that meant, this is old language, or other facility.
Okay, right. Yeah, mm-hmm.
I think what we're saying is that the roll-off dumpster cannot be placed, sorry, can be placed, the permit is to place the dumpster on the village street, village street, period.
Facility meaning. Yeah, and responsible for filing dumpster permit, or the paying the fees and then by, and receiving approval from the code enforcement.
Word.
Village street or highway.
It's still in G. Forty-eight hours before a roll-off dumpster is placed upon any village street.
Or highway. Uh, in G, in, in G, the first sentence, the last portion of the first sentence should say, before a roll-off dumpster, dumpster is placed on
Oh, you're adding this.
any village street or highway, period.
Or highway, we have village highways?
Yeah. Uh, up, up above in definitions.
Street or highway, there are fit, okay, listen to it, okay.
There is.
Right, other facility, okay.
Street or highway.
Okay, so it would be capitalized.
That would be, you know, put one behind your house or something, a front.
Which reminds me, I didn't capitalize the S's, I'll have to go back and do that.
Like apartment building or something.
I would think. So could it, uh, the other facility mean somewhere like behind Food Town?
But you just said we don't need a, people don't need a permit to place a dumpster on private property.
Private property.
They need dumpsters if they're gonna be enclosed.
Actually, they, I don't think they need a permit if they're enclo- if they are on private property and enclosed. I mean, we, we would not permit a dumpster to be placed on, on village property and enclosed. It has to be.
So if they put a dumpster behind Food Town, say, outside of where that enclosure thing is there, where all the rats are?
Yeah.
Um.
Sorry, that one.
But that's their private property, so.
Well, that, it, it's to be determined when they're not, the current enclosure is part of their pri- they keep moving.
Okay. All right, so, so, let me, assuming that that's their private property.
Yes, yes.
Uh, if they were to put a dumpster there, what regulations, what, what do we have to say to them? It's gotta be covered, it's gotta be this, it's gotta be.
Well, they'd have to go, they'd have to go to the zoning and planning boards.
It's, I believe it's a zoning requirement, but I can look it up and get back to you on that.
Okay. Okay.
So it's one thirty-four dumpster enclosure.
So if we can't, if we can't regulate anything on private property, then in B, um, we're having shall, shall have enclosures installed around the contain- container of brick, blah, 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 why, why would we have that there?
I, I believe that it's in zoning, I will check and get back to you.
I don't think we'd have any authority, I can't imagine where, who would put one that we would let them dispose of.
But, you know, I mean, I could, I could see, yeah.
It's for sanitary and health, and public health reasons.
And also for, you know.
Because it's an open container of garbage.
Right, so then, so then we would have, then we would be able, we'd have authority over private properties such as Food Town then.
And also for.
Yes, we, we have authority over private property.
Right, so then, that goes to what facilities might be in G, that that might mean dumpsters are, you know, they're two different types of dumpsters, and, you know, placing them on a street or in a facility. You know, the facility might be.
Facility to me sounds like the wrong word.
Maybe facility's not a great word, but.
I, I, yeah, I think, I think what we, if we're looking at G right now, we're saying that if the person is filing a dumpster permit which says that they're placing it on public property, it, they can place it on a village street or a highway. They can't place it on a sidewalk.
Well, it's, it used to have facilities, it used to have village street or highway or facility, right?
It, it had previously said facility, but I'm, I got the impression that they were talking about a different piece of property.
Okay, as we're looking, we're talking about this, look at H, placement of a dumpster, blah, 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 may be prohibited from any street location. Now, to me, any street location doesn't necessarily mean a village street. If it is determined that the placement shall constitute a public nuisance or hazard because of contours, and that's sort of what we're arguing about. The reason why we need to control when, where people put it. Does that answer that?
So, a placement, the placement of a roll-off dumpster.
Does H? Dumpster, right, so.
May be prohibited from any street location, if it is determined that the placement of the dumpster, and I would, of the roll-off dumpster may be prohibited from any street with, that, if it is determined that the placement of the, I would say roll-off dumpster again, Fran.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If it is determined that the placement of the roll-off dumpster.
Right.
And change container to dumpster.
Right, mm-hmm. Will constitute a public nuisance and a hazard because of contour and narrow with, uh, um, yeah, we need to go more in depth because this is talking about a public nuisance or a hazard based on the fact that it's gonna narrow the street too much, it doesn't talk about the fact that it's a health hazard or, or, so maybe we need to.
It's a public nuisance.
It's a public nuisance.
Okay, a public nuisance, and a hazard. Uh, should we say are a hazard instead of and a hazard?
It also says highway conditions peculiar to the street.
I like that.
Okay, should, should that say public nuisance or hazard instead of and a hazard?
And, how about and/or?
Okay, that works. Okay, so we took out the building inspector, it's just saying in general, the placement, so, okay, so that all comes out.
Let.
Mm.
So now it says placement of a roll-off dumpster may be prohibited from any street location if it is determined that the placement
And that's what the code enforcement officer will determine.
should constitute a public nuisance.
Then in on.
Does that, does that handle the, what we were arguing about in G, what we were discussing in G elements?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I. Um, Kieran said, from what I understand from Jeff tonight, but I need to get it more clearly, that the numbers are much too low.
That what?
They're low, they're too low, that these numbers were a good, when this was written years ago, but now.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And he said something about a mil- as Jeff was in here tonight, he said something about a million dollars, but I'm not sure where in this whole thing, so I'm going to.
He's gonna get back to us, and he's gonna tell us, he's also gonna give us wording.
Okay. Okay, good.
For this, and there was the other one section that we needed that part too.
Right, mm-hmm.
So for I, it should say any visual or, or entity places a roll-off dumpster, instead of just dumpster.
That's hyphenated, right?
Yes.
In a roadway or a street or highway, or upon the village right-of-way.
Upon the roadway, roadway. Is roadway, um.
I think roadway is inclusive of.
Is roadway is a defined term in this?
No, it isn't.
Street or highway is.
A street and a highway are both defined terms.
Mm, or, any individual or entity places a roll-off dumpster.
Well, if you're gonna put street or and highway or whatever, now, I wouldn't put roadway, because I think.
Take out, delete.
Yeah, I, I agree with, delete roadway and put in street or highway, or upon the village right-of-way. I would leave that in.
Okay. Yeah. Certificate of insurance. Should give your comma after right-of-way, Steve?
What's that?
Village right-of-way.
Comma?
Shop provide certificate.
Places a roll-off dumpster.
I think so.
Put it on there.
Yeah, it's a stop.
Okay, and then the insurance we're waiting for. Okay.
Yeah, violation of.
Yeah, the current, the current dumpster permit is valid for four days. It can be extended one day at a time. Each extension is an additional fee. Uh, Dave, you said that you wanna change it to five days.
So it should be five work days, or five days usually, if someone.
Weekdays?
Well, the other thing we don't have in here is if you're gonna leave dumpsters on the streets, on the weekend, on the weekend.
Well, that was another point that you made. So permission to place a roll-off dumpster, Fran?
Mm-hmm.
On a village street or highway?
Should be valid, valid for five days.
Well, permission to place a roll-off dumpster on a village street or highway.
I think you have to put order upon village right-of-way also, so if we did it above.
Okay.
What was the logic for four days?
I, I don't know.
It used to be three, and it recently changed to four.
So the code, but the code always said thirty?
It, they never cha- well, they changed the, the dumpster permit and never went through and changed the code. Is valid for weekdays only.
For. Okay, so if you get a dumpster on a Friday, what do you do between?
You have to have it removed for Saturday and Sunday, and roll back on Monday.
Usually use another weekend.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, a lot of people do work on weekends.
Yeah, but I don't see, I mean, if you get a dumpster, if you're working a job, and you have a dumpster that comes in on a Thursday.
Yeah.
What's it gonna cost you to get it out of there on, on, it's not gonna happen, yeah, it's not gonna happen, so that's not good.
The full price, they don't do that. Let you own your own dump truck.
Okay, so, we can't do that, so.
Kind of shafting people there, yeah.
Um, so do you wanna say, well, first of all, is it four or five?
One work week or something?
Five calendar days, I wanna say calendar days.
No.
What's that?
Calendar days.
Why, why, so here's the question, why specify it in the code? Why not leave it in the fee schedule?
The number of days in the fee schedule too?
Yes, mm-hmm. Yes, yeah, the fee schedule shows the number of days and what the fee is.
Oh, you're s-
You know, sometimes people have to work on a weekend, so you can't say they can't have it out there for the weekend.
Right, that's, and that's, yeah.
That wouldn't be in the fee schedule anyway, right?
I mean, whether it's in the fee schedule or whether it's here, we need to sort of figure out whether we want it for four days, five days, weekdays, weekends.
You know, doing work is expensive enough, you have to, when they come to move the dumpsters, to haul it away, and if it has nothing in it, or, you know, it's half full, and they're gonna dump it.
And how much?
Well, you can get, you can get extensions though, so if you have it for five days and you want an extension.
So you're, you don't, so you have to.
You would leave it there and pay another thirty bucks.
Well, it's not, not having it on a weekend.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm curi- I mean, curiosity, and I know this.
You have to, yeah.
Probably does, curiosity, how, how many dumpsters in this village actually stay longer than their.
Fair, fair.
All of them.
Four-day for, I mean, well, the code says thirty days, so therefore.
But it, it, it can be extended.
Right, in, in most cases, they probably don't, but, you know, that.
Yeah, well, I think they, some of them do, some of them do, some of them don't.
They should, right, okay. Okay, so shall we say?
If you say five, it's a week, if it's five work days, or six or whatever.
Okay, but you don't wanna say work days.
Consider, consider why you would wanna say it in here. Why not leave, just leave it in the.
Cause I think it's.
The master fee schedule, which is, by the way, online, anybody can look it at on the village website.
And on the master fee schedule, it's gonna say four or five days?
It currently says four days, and when I said to De- De- what's his name?
Jeff.
Jeff, is that we were considering, considering making it five days.
Hello? Rich.
So he's, he's, you know, it's easy enough to change. That was the whole reason why we put it in the master fee schedule.
Okay, so how would we word this?
Okay, so here's the question, why would we have this?
I don't know why can't just leave five days, what's that?
Why would we have a J?
Why is this here?
Uh, unless.
Because we wanna say that it's valid for the number of days set forth in the master fee schedule?
No, no, you, no, you just say, see, please see the master fee schedule for, um, ta- uh, uh, duration and, and fees.
Do we wanna say something about, uh, it can be, the time may be extended, should that be in here?
It, it's also in the master fee schedule. What I would recommend is that the last sentence be in there. Failure to remove said container after the approved period will be deemed a violation of this chapter.
Okay, so permission, maybe, permission to place. Okay, so permission, maybe permission to place a roll off dumpster on a village street or highway? Or upon blah 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 blah, should be uh. Maybe say. Terms and and fees for placing a dumpster can be found in the master fee schedule. Failure to remove the container after the approved period. I mean, if we're saying failure to remove the container, it needs to sort of have something to lead into it, I think.
Well, if we mention that the fees in the schedule is in the master and then failure to remove according to these plans or something. It's a violation.
So instead of saying permission to place a roll um. What did you just say, Steve?
Uh I don't remember.
Termin fee, term. Come on, Steve.
No, Phil, you don't have to men- if you're gonna mention that, then uh you can just say
Before the end bill.
Failure to uh to remove the container after this approved period will be deemed per- okay, so. What was it? Damn it. What how are we gonna word the we're gonna drop shall be valid and and say?
Um.
You know, you wanna put five in there, that's fine. Keep in mind though, that if you if you change your mind at any point, you you need to, not you personally.
Right.
But if the village board decides that it should be valid for only three days, then they have to change the code, which is a lot more work than.
Right.
You're gonna have to change it. You could just change the fees to make them higher or lower.
Term.
But if you if you if you.
Yeah, but if you wanna. You decide that five isn't enough.
A valid period in here, if you decide you wanna change that. I agree with you. If it's currently four days and thirty dollars and goes to five days, it should be fifty dollars. But if you wanna make it take it back to three days, then you have to change the code.
Um, okay. Terms. Terms and fees.
I mean, if you want, it it's okay to do it this way.
Yeah, no, I know, but I know what you're saying, um.
Right now, it says four days.
Right. Dave, do you Steve, do you think five is enough? I mean, you guys do this all the time.
No, uh sorry, that's the minimum amount. Sorry, the maximum amount under one permit is five days. You then can extend it to six days, seven days, ten days, whatever.
Right.
Five's better than four, for sure.
Or do you wanna just?
That's just fifty bucks whether you done in two days or five days, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's right, you pay the full amount.
Extend it.
I think five is being fair.
Okay, guys, where are we? We're on five or?
Yeah, I think so.
It sounds crap. That was something I just absolutely didn't wanna do. Hmm, and. Yeah, and.
Kirk Douglas Doug, did he?
Yes, yeah, he was a hundred and three.
About thirty thirty like thirty years ago, I mean.
He's a hundred and three and old, hundred and, hundred and three.
How old was he, like ninety five, hundred? Was he?
You're kidding.
That's what they said, a hun- I was like, I didn't realize he was that old.
Wow.
My wife just sent me that.
Yeah, sure, I'll keep him.
Okay, also in that paragraph, the last sentence, Fran, failure to remove said container, failure to remove of the roll off dumpster after the approved period.
It's a lot of work.
Uh do we wanna leave anything in about it? Okay, nevermind, I see it. And maybe a standard additional.
Now, as it turns out, all of the changes that were made, or almost all of the changes that were made, were changes to roll off dumpsters. Oh Fran, in one forty eight dash three A, let's see, the roll off, there's a space needed between.
In this case, yeah, got it.
The front load dumpster is mentioned in B because of the permanent enclosure. It's mentioned in D because of the cover. It's not mentioned anywhere else.
Okay, first of all, the going back with the looking, the title of this chapter has to be changed to dumpsters and roll off containers. Why don't we just go with dumpsters? So whether they roll offs or front loads or whatever.
Yeah, dumpsters, dumpster. Even said it on the definition. That's still up there.
Shall we change the the title suggests dumpsters?
The title dumpster, that's the general terms dumpster. That's what's in.
Yes, yes.
We're just searching dumpsters.
No, maybe.
I think that's fine. If you don't know the, you know, it's split errors on the.
Um what I'll have to do is see whether or not this chapter is referenced in any other chapter.
Look at the S. Yeah, uh and that's the um I know most of our original code was picked out of the New York State book that's underneath there that, you know, when you open it up, it has marks. No, it's a small book on the side there, unless it's in my office, but it's really old, but that's where the original code came from, the New York State code villa- code for villages, um.
What's interesting is this doesn't have any history. Oh, yeah, so this was adopted in ninety three.
It does. Ninety ninety three.
So there's there's no regulations other than enclosure and cover for front load dumpsters. Do we si- want to say specifically that front load dumpsters are not permitted on village streets or highways?
Yeah, they're only on like.
Well, do we say that about other dumpsters?
The only places where front load dumpsters are is Springbrook, behind you in the telly, um.
Those are on all on private property, but yeah, we shouldn't even be picking them up.
But yeah. It's up to Anthony Phillips.
There's one behind Dunkin' Donuts that.
When are we? We're not picking that one up anymore, are we?
We're not picking that up, no, but it's an enclosure and we're we have if we have authority on that, then.
Yeah. I mean, and and they're also in um.
Behind Food Town.
And what the one in the boat club, did they get rid of the one in the boat club?
Well, it's hard to tell.
I don't know.
Hmm, behind Food Town doesn't get picked up by us.
It's not those, I don't think any of them run our streets though or highways, right?
Where it would most probably occur is is if someone, a private individual, or trying to clear out a house.
Except for Food Town.
They might rent a dumpster to throw.
But that would be the the roll off ones, right?
No, I'm talking about the front load.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but the.
I don't know.
They don't hold that much there.
I've never seen. That to me, in my mind, is the one that they throw garbage in.
No one would rent it.
Put two things in it.
You know, bags and like like Springbrook type.
And it's rubbish.
But I I might choose to.
Yeah, okay. Can you, do they, I didn't know they did it that way. I thought I thought you could get half sized.
I don't think anyone could. You wouldn't, you can only put like one love seat in there and you'd be done.
Containers.
Two bags.
Yeah, I I I hear some further.
Okay, so do we wanna say, do we wanna say that front load dumpsters um are not allowed or?
Are not permitted are not permitted on any village street or highways.
I use it for construction, village street.
I was.
Yeah, that's.
Right. Okay, so in the rules.
Yeah. Never. Ten thousand dollar fine.
Do we wanna add it underneath B?
Well, four five thousand.
Between A and B forty eight three?
See me later.
You wanna add it on forty eight three between A and B?
Uh forty eight three.
I guess it's how one.
Make it a B?
What's that?
I gotta get somewhere else, you know, Jerry Wayne.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about. With bullet with the whole.
What's that?
Waterfield thing.
I know, oh my god, oh my god, yeah, yeah, could I condense her life, like, yeah.
They've got tons of kale on it.
Either there Fran or F or E, because that's the other time front load dumpsters are mentioned. It it it's fine where you have it.
There or there or else.
Guys.
Yeah.
That's an annoying one.
I can move it here.
A whole suite.
I think I can move it. Okay, Jeff told me there's a way to do this. Do we have to say right of ways too?
Think we need to put anything in there about dumpsters leaking stuff all over the street or anything like that? Is that something to consider?
Um.
Condition of the di- I mean, they said covers on some of them.
Well, there was something about the the.
Cause people throw bad things in there sometimes.
It says about being a public nuisance, will that cover that? That would be under um forty three I.
I don't know if that would be a nuisance.
I believe that that's covered in streets and sidewalks, um uh discharge of um.
We get dumpsters. There's ac petroleum in there? Like they used to in my neighborhood.
Of fluids onto streets and sidewalks.
So it's in streets and sidewalks, okay.
Okay.
I think that's I think that's what it is.
I don't know if I saw that or not.
Mm-hmm.
Dumpsters, et cetera. Sounds like a story.
Okay, in in the um in J forty eight three J, um okay, we talked about the injury, uh and I'm not an insurance person. It says uh including wrongful death of any one person, and my question was, um would if more than one person gets hurt or dies?
Well, is it, didn't they say that Karen was?
Karen's gonna reword this whole section?
Did you say that? Yeah, seem to send us.
Okay. Okay.
Language.
What's the question on enforcement?
Um that's your question. I'd like to see the village clerk add it, so people who can request enforcement to enforce the provisions of this chapter at the request of the code enforcement officer, um or the village clerk. I mean, that's fine.
I don't think you should be there, I think.
No, not there, but I mean, if somebody comes in and complains and says.
No, but it's under enforcement.
Yeah, it says it should be the duty of the police.
It says that it's the it's the people who can it's who can request, yes, the the a code enforcement.
Can request the police to to enforce it. So if somebody comes in to Jeff and says, listen, there's a dumpster blocking my driveway.
So you're gonna you're gonna have it shall be the duty of police or or Jeff to enforce the.
Jeff will call the police. No, 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 it should be the.
No, 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 not not, no.
Jeff will come at the end.
At the request of the code enforcement officer or the village clerk.
Or the village clerk.
Yeah, I think that's good.
When somebody comes in and complains about something, Jeff's gonna pick up the phone and call us, I know you.
Oh, okay, yeah.
From mayor or or trust.
Okay.
Should be at the request of a resident, anybody.
Yeah, call.
Well, they would typically, yeah, they would typically come in here and complain.
So up on the very top, Fran, did you change the heading?
Um do we I do we do we agree that that should be just be called dumpsters or what are we gonna look?
You have it. I think it should be called dumpsters, right?
Yeah, that's they're all dumpsters.
And and then we're defining them underneath what the definitions are.
And then we have to go to um.
And we just we need to.
Forty eight dash one, which says the title of this chapter shall be called village of call spring dumpsters law or dumpster. Should it be dumpster law or dumpsters law?
Dumpster law.
Without the S.
Dumpster. It's yeah, it needs a S.
It needs a S?
I think so.
Dumpster law?
Dumpsters. Yeah, oh, you're gonna use the word law, then yeah, dumpster.
Okay, so this chapter is waiting for a def- uh definition of front load dumpster. It's waiting for um Kieran's information on insurance. I'm denting, does it matter?
It's waiting for, I have to review all the other chapters to see if they reference this one by name.
Right.
I need to uh refer to go through chapter one thirty four to see if it mentions the enclosure. The chapter has to be capitalized for all of the defined terms.
Okay, so we're at this is chapter forty eight, uh define, so I'm not count, I'm not copying this over to.
No, it's not ready.
Define, uh.
Reimbursement.
Okay. Okay, as much as we have, that's it for this for tonight.
What's that?
Is that it for this one for tonight?
Yeah, that's it for tonight on that one.
What is?
What's what is.
Uh what is, can you go back, Pat?
Mm-hmm.
What is for review costs? What does that mean? On fifty seven dash three of uh.
It's like if you're if um if that planning board's reviewing it and there's a cost associated with that, if they need to talk to John or.
Okay.
Comes out of the escrow or whatever, but that's part of the review cost if it's if you needed to uh consult an engineer.
Like anybody, engineer or whatever. I see.
Are you on the next one, Fran, or?
Uh no, because somebody's uh that's telling me that closing this is gonna be a problem.
Next one is fifty nine.
We're not going to fifty seven?
No, I didn't, we didn't say we would be reviewing that.
What's that?
Yeah.
We didn't say we would be reviewing that tonight. And 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 fifty seven was just passed six months ago.
Fifty nine was the next one on the list. Okay, so fifty nine.
So is something gonna change on it?
Um actually, no, there are no changes in it.
What was that? I thought we're we're going in numerical order, I think.
No, we were going with the, we we listed fifty nine last night, isn't that true?
We're we're going in numerical order for those chapters that have been changed by the code update committee.
We're going in order for those.
For those, yeah. And those that we um we looked at last night.
Yeah, I know.
Fifty seven was one of the ones that we had said we is not ready for us.
It actually hasn't changed, so there are a bunch of other chapters that are not out on Google. These are chapters that haven't changed.
Okay.
But these are in order, so 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 after tonight, well, we'll discuss later, but I think we should clean up or 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 go in order so that we're, you know, I mean, I don't know why we'd skip over reimbursement, but we did.
Be because it hasn't changed. That there are.
But no, it hasn't changed, well, what does that mean?
But maybe we wanna change, maybe we wanna look at something.
But we're looking at them, whether they've changed or not.
If the code update committee hasn't changed, it maybe we wanna.
I I I I thought that what we would do, what it was that we would focus on the chapters that the code update committee had changed. And then we can circle back on the chapters, there are eleven of them, eleven or thirteen, that the code update committee has not recommended any changes. Fifty seven is one of them, and I don't I don't care.
But we're working through these and we're doing, we're not going back on them unless we have to because of the unanswered questions, so. Well, we'll include up fifty seven in our next round so we can clean up and and.
So next, but now next.
So we're going to littering.
Ne- okay, so we're in littering, um fifty nine, um. So our next our next meeting is the nineteenth, we the eighteenth we said, right?
Eighteenth, mm-hmm. Governor, so.
I mean, all of your comments on littering, I assume are just um capitalizations.
Capitalizations.
Whoops.
Uh there were a couple of questions.
Okay. I'm gonna go back and hear it the way I just just.
The um current uh.
Are you accepting these as you go, Fran?
No, because they're not they're not actually done, they're just suggestions, so they need to be. I mean, I can do that.
Yeah, okay.
So going through.
There are, there's a definition in here of a non-commercial handbill, and there is a reference to a commercial handbill, but there's no definition of a commercial handbill. So my recommendation is that a commercial handbill be defined, number one, either a commercial handbill be defined or a definition of handbill that encompasses both commercial and non-commercial be defined.
Where are we?
Okay, so in chapter fifty seven, under definitions, you will see a definition of handbill.
Handbills.
And it describes a whole bunch of things. Then there is later on.
Go back up to the top.
Under definitions.
I'll have the number in there, no, farther. So this is handbills. I gotta go higher. Handbills in public places, handbills on vehicles.
Then there is a definition under definitions.
I know, then I see, where is the definition?
Of non-commercial handbill.
What section are you in, Ray?
I'm still in definitions.
Definitions.
I'm under definition, I don't see.
The only one is, the only beneath garbage, the definition, next definition says handles.
There's a hand. Okay, and then three down is non-commercial handbill.
There's.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
And then within the text of non- And then within the text of non-commercial handbill, there is a quote, commercial handbill.
Okay.
So either we need to define, we need to have a definition for commercial handbill, or what I would recommend is that handbill, that definition that has four subbullets underneath it, that that be changed to encompass both commercial and non-commercial handles. I I don't see why we would be differentiating between commercial handles and non-commercial handles.
Well, is there a difference?
Uh, yeah, um, a commercial handbill is
Commercial, and another would be, uh, my my cat is lost.
Yes, non-commercial.
Yeah.
Oh, got you, okay. Got you.
So I I recommend that the handbill definition be expanded to include both commercial and non-commercial, and the definition for non-commercial be deleted, and all of the text that refers to either
Mm-hmm.
a commercial handbill or a non-commercial handbill be changed to just handbill.
Is there any reason in the hope, cause I did not read this whole chapter today.
What?
I know, I'm sorry.
Oh, my god!
I didn't, I didn't do my homework, I really was not.
I didn't either.
Uh, is there, uh, my question, is there any reason in the text that we need to differentiate?
Not that I saw, Fran, I I went through the text today, I
Okay.
The the text essentially says, you can't do this, you can't, so this is a, this is a
Littering.
Mm-hmm. You can't throw handles on the ground, you can't throw hand, you can't put handbills on a car, you can't throw handbills in a river or a stream or a lake. You can't throw them on on private property, you can't, blah, 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 blah.
Doctor Snyder, okay, um, so we wanna just basically say
I'll I'll give you a definition for uh for a handbill that accompa- that encompasses both commercial and non-commercial.
So in this one definition where a handbill is highlighted, can I just put a comma, commercial or non-commercial?
No, I wouldn't even dif- I would not even differentiate between the two.
Just say handle, okay. Got you.
Because once you do, then then you have
Then you then you have to problem, um, you had highlighted commercial place, I think that maybe
I'm sorry.
Maybe definitions, commercial places.
Oh, yes, because it would have gone before that, if we were going to insert commercial handbill.
Oh, okay, got you. So let me shout, okay.
And and I'm suggesting that we don't do that now.
Got you.
Are are you guys okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Okay, and then I'll go through and eliminate all commercial
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, there's a word here that somebody has to define for me, between public place
For
Putrescible.
Where?
Putresc- putrescible, between public place and refuge.
I'm sorry, between.
Liable to decay, subject to putrification.
Putrification, that's decomposing.
Okay, so the the word putrescible is subject to putri-
Putrescible means It can be putrefied.
Dave asked that that be included.
Okay.
Good word.
All putrescible, non-putrescible, solid waste.
Fancy.
Sorry, Dave asked that a definition
Like a kill you.
Right.
be included.
Okay, so then, I would not define it to say
And I And I have it here.
Liable, all right, liable to decay.
Are you okay with liable to decay, subject to putrification?
Um, David, um, putrescible, liable to decay, I'm okay with, subject to putrification to me makes it almost like a circular definition, it's a choosing, it's a bit
It's the definition that I found, yeah.
Um, liable, can we just leave it liable to decay? Cause if you're gonna say subject to putrification
So putres- that word is an adjective.
Yeah.
Garbage putrefies.
Okay, and liable to deget, to to decay is um, I call that a verb, yeah.
Like a a proverbial phrase or something.
Um, so subject to putrification is um a uh it is a qualifier.
Putrescible.
Liable, is everybody okay with liable to decay and subject to putrification?
Sure.
Don't get me on a bad line, cause I'll never remember that this.
Good word.
Um, is that you have a mis- putref- subject to, oh, I may have a
Vile to be kind.
I may have a mistake there.
Putrefaction.
I have to, I
Yeah, I would understand that more, actually, yeah.
Did I spell that word wrong, Marie?
Uh, no, I may have spelled it wrong, Fran.
How about the definition is uh something that can become rotten, that's in plain English.
I I think li- liable to
Liable to decay, I think is is what you're looking for there, it it
Yeah.
Crossed different.
Sorry, you had the right word, by the way.
Yeah.
So we're not using putrefy.
Subject to, so we're just take that off.
What did you decide on?
Um, just leave it liable to decay.
Yeah, okay.
Or did you wanna add
No, it's good.
subject to putrefaction.
I wouldn't add the putrefy, putrescible.
Putrefaction, the decay of the organic
So 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 as it turns out, I have, I disagree with that, liable can be interpreted to mean possibly
Yeah, mayor, man.
to decay, it's
Uh, it's
putres- yeah, that word is something that will decay.
Okay.
It's not
Let me, let me get
And badly to
Yeah.
Could you put that on the end, badly, not good.
Where did, where did you get this word, Dave?
It's in, it's in the definitions, Fran.
Okay.
If you look at rubbish or refuse or putrescible and non-putrescible.
Something that is, let's see, I'm looking at the definition that probably the same way you came up with, Marie, which basically says liable to decay. It says putrescible is an adjective, uh, let me see. Something that could become rotten. Depends on which dictionary you'd like to use, liable to become putrid. Liable to decay or to become putrid. It it, that's the only way I see it defined.
How about decayable?
Liable to
We could run any, any of the above.
Any of the above?
Yeah.
Garbage.
Make make, I would make it decayable, because then it's not
Not it, what putrefiable means, I didn't.
A a possibly
Decayable a word?
Yes.
I'm sure I spelled that wrong.
I'm sure I did.
Decable.
Decable.
Decayable.
I'm sure I actually spelled it wrong, so
It's a K, able, a cable, a D capable of D K, a decable.
Decable. Yes, Google, they should, a cable.
There you go.
Decayable.
That's right, I have a black term.
Decable.
Decable.
Jazz term, the decable, jazz artist.
Decayable. Yeah, right, it's not happening, okay, all right, so I'm just gonna have to check my spelling on that.
I mean, it has to be spelled that way, I just don't know, I've never heard that word before.
Yeah, is it, decable, right, if not, we'll come up with a better, um
This connection is not private, okay.
It's gonna roll, okay, this doesn't make sense to me, Dave.
Where are we now?
You're at rubbish, non-put- why do we have to use the T word?
In your comment.
Okay, this doesn't make sense to me, rubbish, um, non-putrescible solid waste consisting of both combustible and non-combustible waste including but not limited to beer, soda, water, and other metal cans.
Garbage.
Well, if that includes but not limited to beer, soda, and water, which are, you know, are 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 liquids and other metal cans.
I don't get, yeah, I don't get
Myself, just pour it in my can, it's like
Yeah. Or bottle tops, it's solid waste consisting of both combustible and non-combustible waste, why don't we just leave it at that? Instead of trying to list a whole bunch of stuff. Tops or flip tops of cans, glass bottles, plastic bottles, or po- bottle tops.
Bottle, let me look, the cables.
Cigarette packs, can, uh, yeah, I think getting into a laundry list is gonna get us in trouble.
Yeah, cause some of the stuff here
Yeah.
describing as recyclable.
So then you gotta name that too later on.
No, yeah, recyclable's a separate chapter.
Right, so we shouldn't even have it in there.
What this is, this, what this is saying is that you can't throw refuse, rubbish, um, uh, or garbage on village streets or sidewalks, or on private uh property, or in lakes or streams, blah, 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 blah.
Doesn't everybody know that?
Yeah, but they don't care.
Yeah, they do, anyway, they do it less now than when I was just Less learned bugs out there.
The beer, soda, water, and other metal cans, um, we could just change that to metal cans.
All trash.
We're looking at rubbish, uh, rubbish is mostly dry materials such as glass, paper, cloth, or wood.
Or we could just add, includes cans, glass bottles, plastic
It's not decayable, it'll it'll be with us forever or quite a long time.
Cigarette effects.
Refuge includes, cause we have three definitions, here we have refuse, rubbish, and you said we had garbage up here someplace.
Yes.
Okay, refuse includes garbage and rubbish.
Yeah. This is
Objects or wooden, wood, old mattresses.
This this hasn't been changed, this is from whatever the code said before, sorry, there's one other change here.
Okay.
I know they do.
They're saying on pullout from the way beacon oil machine.
The inclusion of water cans
You ever use for years.
Has
You know, maybe all night, coming back from beacon.
Included. And plastic, pl- plastic bottles.
Come off. Cut herself a good, throw an old oil burner.
Garbage is mostly decompo- decomposable, food waste. Okay, and rubbish is mostly dry materials, garbage is highly putrescible or decomposable, or rubbish is non-
Putrescible, just non-putrescible, whatever, it's solid waste consisting of both combustible and non-combustible waste. End it.
Boom. End of story.
Solid waste. I I would, yeah, I would end it there rather than trying to li- to list rubbish.
Yeah, cause that's a
Mostly dry materials.
Needs to be, it's a lot of stuff, yeah.
Can we take that off?
How about we just say all rubbish, you know?
Can't say all rubbish in the definition of rubbish.
No, all rubbish, no. Okay, so if we delete
See refuse.
If we delete, what's, can you guys see what's highlighted, and just leave it non-putrescible solid waste consisting of combustible and non-combustible waste?
That's pretty good. Cause there's a lot more examples of rubbish that we're not naming.
Yeah, and when we start a laundry list, we get to a little bit
Waste of ink.
Abandoned automobiles are a little weird.
So if that is done, then above there for refuse, it should be all putrescible, solid waste.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Putrescible.
Except body waste.
Except body waste, dead animals.
Including garbage, rubbish.
Abandoned automobiles, solid market, and industrial waste.
Solid.
Is ash putrescible, look it up.
The non, the non-big word is in rubbish, the
Putrescible is
The decayable stuff is in refuse.
And it's in garbage, actually, garbage is putrescible, animal vegetable waste resulting from handling Hmm.
A lot of people throw their dog poop in the
Garbage is food.
Yeah, animal vegetable waste resulting from handling, pre- preparation, cooking, and consumption of food, so garbage is basically food.
It it's all dealing with food.
Uh, okay, we're gonna redefine handbills, uh, so do, are we okay taking out that part in rubbish?
Mm-hmm.
That's highlighted.
Yeah, I think so. I don't know about anybody else, no person should throw handbills.
We're not capitalizing any of the stuff that you've got in here for the time being.
How about those uh How about those election, election signs that get left behind all the time?
Yeah, they're not too bad, I mean, really, this this year, most of them got picked up pretty fast.
We need to name them.
Should be dead, no, should be handled, okay, basically.
Getting into the finer points there.
Okay, handbills in public places are
Need to raise it.
If you want your handbills attached upon sidewalks, street, or other public places. Or attached to any tree or utility pole or tree, okay, I remember, I remember looking at this about a year ago. Um
It it's also found in the section on signs and placards.
Okay, that's where I had, I know I, I know I had seen something.
So I would recommend that that change be accepted.
Okay, the, um
Oh, sorry, Fran, it says, or attached to any tree or utility pole or tree, I really wanted to emphasize tree in there.
Okay. Got you, okay.
Get the cramps in my head.
Oh, jeez, we get it from the damp weather, too.
Working.
It's gonna be
When I stop working, they cramp up, I just gotta get back to work.
It's hard with you, why you not working?
This is time off.
Um
I can take care of the capitalization, but it'll have to wait until Saturday, uh, does anybody have a problem with that?
By the time it passes. No.
Mm-hmm.
Nope, today is what, Wednesday?
Okay. Today's Wednesday.
Thursday, Friday, okay, cause we're not coming back to this until the eighteenth, and by then we should be Okay, so, um, we're at, Dave said, I thought I remember seeing somewhere that in the code, that handbills can be temporarily fastened to utility
No, not in this chapter.
Poles, it was okay, but it was someplace else.
This chapter sa- says you you can't, you almost can't put them anywhere.
So how is one, how do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if one chapter says you almost can't put them anywhere, another chapter says you can, shouldn't they sort of be consistent?
I believe it is consistent.
Okay, no person shall post hang or cause, I'm sorry, I didn't read your notes.
But there's definitely a chapter that says that you can put them
Yeah, one oh four.
What's that, one thirty?
One oh four?
One oh four says you have to get a permit to put them up.
There's another one.
And there was, there was something else, um, I remember one time checking that if somebody puts sign up or post in anybody in those can be, can remove them, is that also in one oh four?
You can remove it, yes, that's that's Is that also in one oh four? I'm pretty sure that's in one oh four, I have to, come on.
No person shall hang, post hang or cause to be posted, any handbill notice, I said legal notices. Without prior permission. Maybe. Removal, okay, that's, you quoted that, Marie, one oh four three one, help, handbills, notices, and placards must be removed by twelve midnight, the last day of the event. So this is, they have to have permission to put them up.
So, yes, and that is in one oh four dash one oh four dash three, um F, handbill notice or placard, no person shall post hang or cause to be posted or hung, any handbill notice or placard except legal notices upon any post, telegraph, or electric light pole, tree, or fence, or other object in any street or public place of the village without a permit from the village clerk, and any such sign, handbill, notice, or placard placed in violation hereof may be removed by any citizen of the village, so.
There's no place in the code that says people can put them up?
Yes, there is one, and I can't find it.
No, yeah, okay.
There's one that says that actually, and I did this, and I know this because someone came in here last year and wanted to put some up for uh, wanted to put them on the poles for some event.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
And in the code, it says that the mayor, on mayor's approval, that 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 could be there. And I I had a guess today, and I can't
I remember that, yeah, um, it must be someplace in one oh four, because that's the unless it's, unless it's signs and placards, okay, so we need to, we need to leave this question pending.
Yeah, I'll find it later.
I remember that anyway, can take anything down.
Okay.
Um, can I sort of suggest, cause we're only about halfway through this chapter, I don't know how many more.
I don't think I have any or any other comments in this chapter.
What? Yeah, I think the rest is just
There's a, there's a couple of commercial
It's all app capitalization.
Putrescible.
There's a couple of referring to commercial and non-commercial handbills.
And that was for capitalization.
Okay.
So, um, I'll go through that over the weekend, but I don't remember there being any other comments.
Got you. Um, okay, so we should be pretty much finished with this, uh, and I'm gonna leave it pending.
I think so.
So that's fifty nine. So that's fifty-nine. So tonight, we only completed forty-seven.
Okay, so our next meeting is on.
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth, and that's at seven, or seven thirty?
Seven thirty, seven.
Seven thirty.
Okay.
And.
Are we going back over nine?
What's that?
We're gonna go back and look at nine.
And what are we doing on that day?
Nine forty-five.
I think we should.
What is it, nine, what?
I think we should bring whatever is needed to discuss.
Nine forty-five.
Nine forty-five, and then, um, do we wanna look at, hopefully, Kieran will have given us information on forty-eight. And a couple of questions that we have pending on this one, fifty-nine. These are the ones that are pending. Do we want to then go, Dave, did you wanna do fifty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
And then we had sixty-four and seventy-one for tonight. Is that?
Which we did not.
Which we didn't get to. 'Cause we were, we're not, okay. So.
It's the dumpsters, man, they really hung us up.
The last, the damn dumpsters.
Sixty-four and seventy-one, all some.
Oh, seventy, that's, let me, let me just, okay, so.
So it'd be fifty-seven, sixty-four, seventy-one, they'll probably all get done, if we get that done.
After we review nine forty-five.
Review nine forty-five, forty-eight.
Right, forty-eight and fifty-nine.
Okay, now, so if you wanna start from the numeric, the beginning, chapter seven is defense and indemnification.
I just wanted to finish one that you had sent us, so we have them all here.
Right, but you had said you wanted to go through fifty-seven because that was in numeric order.
I have fifty-seven on, on what you had sent me here.
No, no, we made no change.
Well, you'll have to come over and see my screen, 'cause somehow it's on there. Reimbursement, reimbursement. But I don't know how it got there, I didn't put it there.
Oh, the fact that it's there, sorry, it's, that's, sorry, little flammers, that's neither here nor there.
Okay. Additional chapters.
It does exist, you.
Yes, yes, there, there are a lot of chapters.
But these are the ones that you sent us, all of these right here, right? That's why I have them, these came in a bunch, in a group, that's why I have my Google Docs, I don't have the other ones.
I put them, right, I, I did not send those chapters that don't have any changes in them.
But somehow fifty-seven, we do have on there.
'Cause it is in post phase five.
I mean, can we agree that it is one of them, or am I just like an anomaly here?
Yeah, let's, let's just do it, it doesn't look like it's a big one, it looks like it's a small.
And was it on your, the group that you had gotten originally?
I don't have it on a list.
You don't have it on?
But that doesn't necessarily mean my list, 'cause my papers are so screwed up at this point. I have a list that says, um.
For the post-phase five.
Right.
If you go to that, you don't have reimbursement.
Post-phase five, I see it there, but I was going by.
Right, and that's what we were working off of.
I was going by the, the list that Marie was sending, which at this, a while ago, we had a one oh six, one fourteen, one eighteen, one oh one, uh, a whole bunch of other stuff. And then, and then you sent us a list of things that should not be done.
Post-phase five, I thought was what we were sent to work off of and start working on, that's, that's not true, we were sent something else?
Well, post-phase five. We were sent an email, 'cause I thought, I thought it, a couple of times.
For, after post-five?
Well, I, I thought everything was in post-phase five, and then we were just, we were assigned, uh, anyway, regardless.
I don't think the other things, I don't think the other things are, are they?
Um, so as of now, for next time, we've got nine forty-five, forty-eight, and fifty-nine, which are all reviews of things we've done. And then fifty-seven, which is a new one.
Fifty-nine, fifty-seven, is that new one?
No, it's not new, it's a fifty, fifty-seven.
Not new, it's one we haven't looked at yet.
New to review.
New to review. So we've got four that have been reviewed and need to be re-reviewed, and then fifty-seven, and then tonight, we were all supposed, supposed to do
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four and seventy-one, so I'm gonna put them on.
Mm-hmm.
All right, what I can do is I can just send everyone an email.
What about sixty-four, was it on our list?
Yes, that's on for, okay, I'm, I'm just gonna.
Sixty-four, H D R V.
I'm glad that'll take us forever, a million years.
So that's not for next time?
Yeah, that's for next time, but probably not one we're gonna get to. Yeah, I'm just gonna do a fast, I'll eat out everybody. Are we done? Can I quit now?
It is after night.
It is, we need to go home and have a drink and get some sleep.
The pen's not working.
Your pen's not working?
There it is.
Throw it away.
Yeah, here is one oh four dash one, I have that, no person shall post hang, blah, 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 telegraph, electric goes, tree, fence, others, uh, without permit from the mayor, and any such sign, handbills noticeably go, unless this is an old, old code.
There you go.
That knows.
One oh four dash one.
Do we put anything else in the chapter's approved file tonight?
Uh, we put one, we should've put forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
We got time.
All right, Mike?
Wait on.
Hold thing up. I noticed you faded back for a while there.
I just needed to stretch, are we done?
Yes.
Vote in the jury.
Second.
Own favor, aye.